So my mom, Eddie Swenson, she went to school and sort of... And I actually worked on there and then, um, actually my son came into college and into my heart.
Not everybody wants to do business. Can't interrupt the order.
All right, it is 7:01, and being a stickler for starting, we are going to start the city commission meeting. I am going to ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Colton Griffin to come forward and lead us in that pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Colton, and we'll be hearing from him in a little bit here. Roll call.
Here.
Excuse me, I hit the wrong button. Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City manager Leon.
Here.
All right, moving on in the agenda, I would ask for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 9th, 2023.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the commission minutes? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Nope? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? All right, minutes passed. With that, moving on to number three is the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Over there, we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the bills? Anybody in the public? Now we'll take a roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four, under routine business, is the city manager's reports. With that, I'll turn it over to city manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and the public. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. I have a couple of things for you, and I also have received a couple of questions that I want to answer for you this evening, so bear with me here. First, regarding your agenda this evening, under new business, item number one, the salary adjustments for city manager, finance officer, and city attorney, those do need to be three separate motions. You have three separate resolutions, so it's under one item, but we'll ask you to make three separate motions on your action, one for each position. So bear that in mind when you get to that point in your agenda. You have received the sales tax reports, and that was reported on, I believe, in Saturday's newspaper for the year end. We did end up in the positive, 8.51% overall. That's all three pennies combined. That's an exciting place to be. We're happy about that. I'm not as certain what that means with some of the questions I have about the economy. Interestingly enough, Commissioner Benson and Mayor Moser and I were just in attendance at the annual Thrive meeting. They had an economist from SDSU that spoke with us about inflation and some things and opened my mind to some new ways of thinking about some of these numbers. So, you know, I think we all need to still wait and see what happens here, but if folks want more information on sales tax, that was emailed to you last week. But we did end the year strong and stronger than we predicted, which is a good place to be. Lots of questions about what's happening up north on the Broadway and 31st Street corner. The trees that are being taken down is the city's contractor in preparation for the mead area development that's going to take place, so the public's aware of that. I hate to be saying we're taking down more trees, but yes, there's trees being taken down there. There isn't a way to accommodate the infrastructure without taking those trees, so I did want to let the public know that as well. I did receive a question about what's the next steps in that development, what's going to be happening next. Probably for the time being, nothing. That's kind of what can be done during the wintertime. We don't expect they'll be trying to dig infrastructure until now spring, but the public probably will see a little more site work being done there, and then not until spring see something else occur there. So. A reminder for folks interested in running for city commission. Petitions are available at the city in the finance office beginning on Friday. That's this Friday, the 27th. You can also download a petition from the Secretary of State's website, so there's more information on the city website for folks that might be interested in running for city commission. Wanted to also mention to you that last Monday, the Summit Activities Task Force met, and we had a good turnout. Pretty much everyone that was invited was able to attend. Largely an information gathering and information providing meeting. We kind of gave the lay of the land, set our goal as a committee, excuse me, as a task force, and talked about meeting times and dates and some of the logistics of those types of things. The next meeting's going to be held next Monday. That is, I believe, the 30th, and the group will work on a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats type exercise to talk about some of the things that they want to focus on in their work. So Commissioners, Commissioner Schramm and Mayor Moser serve on that committee as your liaisons, and I intend to provide updates at your commission meetings regarding their work with the goal of that task force coming to you with some recommendations prior to your budget session. Wanted to have Chief Foot visit a little bit with you this evening. He and Commander Rothenberger had the opportunity to visit with some of our retailers who were concerned about theft, that's some theft that they're experiencing, and so wanted him to provide some of the information to you on that conversation and then next steps.
So Commander Rothenberger and I had the opportunity to speak with our local retailers. Most of them are the big retailers, Walmart, Menards, TSC, Bongars, Hy-Vee, Ace, about the theft that they're experiencing in their businesses. A lot of them had the same concern is that their thefts are occurring at each place by the same individuals, or they're targeting each business on the same day or later on in that, but it's happening by the same people. They also know that these people that are out doing these thefts, they know a certain dollar amount that they got to stay under to avoid being arrested. They would get just cited if they're under a certain dollar amount. So coming up with a plan to work together with these retailers, not only locally but also in the surrounding communities, Vermilion, Tyndall, those other areas that also experience some of this retail theft, of identifying the individuals that are doing it, whether or not they're from Yankton or from some other community and coming into Yankton, but help identify them so that we can prosecute them effectively and work with the police to bring forth all the evidence that they would need to prosecute or make sure it's successfully prosecuted. So it's just part of a work group that's going to work on these issues. We've talked about using Crime Stoppers, which we had a meeting the day before with Crime Stoppers, and using that to maybe try to help identify. There's also apps out there that we're looking at, and maybe those will work to help communicate within the group, sharing photos, sharing information, so that people can be on the lookout for certain individuals causing some retail theft.
I think that's a great collaboration with our business community, so appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Got a question about the improvements on Douglas Avenue reconstruction between Levy and Second Street. Those plans are currently being reviewed by our engineering staff, and the question was regarding whether or not we were going to have some new, some, excuse me, not new, but some opportunity for design elements similar to others that we have downtown. Yes, there's some opportunity for that in the sense that, you know, the traffic combers are already in place. That particular area already has some landscape boulevards with trees. We haven't planned any permanent planters in that space because those have had varying degrees of popularity, but there is an opportunity to perhaps work with our Parks Department if we should want to purchase some of those big white landscape planters. They're, I think you know what I'm talking about, I'm not sure what we're calling those, but they're pretty large, and Lisa and Amanda work on those to landscape those for the season, so that might be a possibility. But in the design itself, we think that that particular intersection is already pretty good shape in terms of how it's designed for pedestrians. I wanted to also give an update to you all on the signals. So last week, you're aware, we had some late starts and dismissals and cancellations of school, and we have the new technology now where we can program the signals according to the school times of dismissal or late starts, et cetera. Well, one was not working. We got that report, we went back and checked it out. It was entered to work appropriately according to what the school's plans were, so it was programmed by our staff, and Dr. Kendall and his team always do a great job of letting us know what the plans are, and we're not sure why it didn't work. This morning, the staff ran a mock early dismissal, so pretended that we were dismissing when school was in session, and we programmed all the signals, and they all worked according to how they should. So I don't know if we had a glitch or what exactly happened, but we believe they're in working condition going forward. We don't think winter's over, so we'll probably be using them again. One thing for the public to know that the PD and engineering would want us to remind you of is the fact that the speed should be reduced whether or not those signals are on. Whenever there's, you know, school in session, whenever there's children present, the speed needs to be reduced, so don't rely solely ever on those signals. There's kids coming back and forth from Boys and Girls Club, et cetera, and about the school area all the time, and we have a park right adjacent, so it's just, you know, regardless of whether or not you see a flasher, we want the flashers to work on time, and we'll continue to make sure that they do, but keep your speeds appropriate for where you are. Okay. Mayor, if there's not any other questions, I think that's all I have for the group at this time. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing no microphones, come on. Colton, I would ask you to step forward to the podium here. I would ask the commissioners, as he makes his way forward to recall, back forward to when this young man came to us earlier. I don't even recall how long ago, Colton. Time passes fast when you're old like me.
It was like May.
Was it May? It was the spring, I think, something like that. But Colton's back in front of us tonight. If you'll recall, Commission, he came in front of us as an Eagle Scout project to work with skate park, and he's here tonight to update us. We got pictures even. All right. So Colton, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so pretty much...
If you can step up and speak loudly into the mic. This is broadcast to millions of people.
Oh, no.
Across the United States, because everybody wants to hear the Yankton City Commission meeting, so make sure you speak loud and clear into the mic, please.
Yeah, so it took a while, but it's finally done, I would say. So we ordered the parts from American Ram Company back in, I think it was May, and they arrived like late October, and we didn't start till November, like a couple of weeks, maybe a weekend in November, and so by then it was pretty cold. And, yeah, it was like much more work than I expected it to be, especially assembling like the main ramp that we ordered called like the pyramid. We started with the frame, right, and then, you know, eventually had to put on the sides, but once we put on the sides, we realized that it was probably smarter to have done that last, even though we continued with the project, because all the pieces, I don't know how to explain, they have to be like screwed in from underneath, so we put the sides on, and then I had to get underneath the ramp with my friends and like individually, like bolt, like not bolt on, because they're already in there, but like tighten down every single one and adjust them. So laying on the cold, hard ground was not much fun, but had to do it. Yeah, what else was my ramp? Yeah. So in the top left corner, that's the old spine, and we decided that we wanted to, you know, replace it, because as you see, it has holes in it, it's been there since, what, 2008, I think, around then. And so bought the wood for it, and we reused the skate light that was there, and we rebuilt a new one. So that's, I'm looking forward to that the most, probably, besides the pyramid. And another part of it, well, it wasn't part of my project originally, but we noticed that the half-pipe has like, had about two feet too much of vert, like it was just straight up and down, so it was really, really dangerous to skate on. And so talked to Todd about it, and he got in contact with ArTech and drew up some plans, and they kind of use it as like a learning tool, but they took it back here and cut it off with a plasma cutter and then just cut down that vert, so now we have a mini-ramp, which is really cool. We also installed two flat bars, so I think they're about eight feet long each. There's one on like south side and one on the north side of the park, and one is like a circle, and then one is like a box, like square. That's us working on it. And that's the final, final project. Yeah. I think, yeah, there's a little bit down, so you can see where everything is now. Cool.
So what's your biggest takeaway? What, obviously you said, I wish I would have done this, but what would you say is your biggest takeaway that you learned from this project that you think you can carry forward into other projects you may take on?
Don't procrastinate on stuff.
Don't wait till winter, is that what you're saying?
Even though I'm still going to continue to do that, don't procrastinate. It's pretty much the best thing I could say.
That's a good life lesson that, trust me, as an adult, we'd like to think goes away, but I think all of us could say that we continue to do that.
I would say I waited quite a bit too long to think of a project after like COVID and stuff. I was pretty much out of it for like three years, so I've been a Life Scout for, since like 2018, 2019, so, yeah.
And how long did it take you from start to finish? When you did start this, how long did it take you to complete it? How many hours would you say?
We finished, oh, so like total man-hours was 252, like with everybody included, and I don't know, we started early, early November, and we finished at like December 27th, about? It was around then.
Thank you for all your work, Colton.
No problem.
I can't wait to do my first rail slide. That's going to be sick.
Me too, for sure.
And I can't wait for somebody to film him doing that first rail slide.
But, yeah, I mean, it was, it took a lot of help from like people, especially Todd Larson, he's really great to work with, great person, really helpful, and thanks to you guys for, you know, letting me do this, and all like the Parks workers, because they were really helpful, because like to open the gate, I mean, we didn't want stuff to get stolen, so we had them lock it up, and they would come and open it for us whenever we needed it, especially Todd, so, yeah.
Well, I want to say thank you too, because we talk all the time in the city that it's great partnerships with individuals and groups that allow us to provide exemplary spaces in our community for individuals to learn, grow, and thrive, but it also takes individuals like you that step forward, that want to partner with the city, to make spaces like this, and for you to step forward and want to partner with us speaks volumes about you and where I think you're going to go in life, so thank you for doing that and for wanting to work with us as well.
Thank you, guys.
Yes. All right, that was a scheduled public appearance, so I do want to open it up tonight for anybody else in the public that wants to address the commission on something not on the agenda. Seeing no movement forward to the microphone, we will move forward to the, ooh.
Uh-oh, we just...
So not saying there's ghosts, but anyways, moving on to the consent agenda, we have one item in front of you tonight, and that's to establish February 13th, 2023, as the date for a public hearing on the request for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023, from Joanne D. Selvus, doing business as Selvus Concession, Surtoma Park at 15th and Fertig Street in Yankton. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Posed nay. Consent agenda passes. Moving on to old business, number one is consideration of memorandum 23-12 regarding the request for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-sale liquor license for January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2023, from WR Capital LLC, Don Anderson, President, doing business as Minerva's Grill and Bar, to LLTD1 LLC, Kimberly Ocampo owner, doing business as Bosses Pizza and Chicken Sports Bar, located at 1607 East Highway 50, Suite 1, located here in Yankton. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries.
Number two, under old business is consideration of memorandum 23-13 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for one day, February 4th, 2023, from BPO Elks Lodge 994, Lindsey Stotz Secretary, located at 504 West 27th Street, for an event at the NFAA at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries.
Number three, under old business is consideration of memorandum 23-14 regarding the request for a special events retail on-sale liquor license for two days, February 10th and 11th, 2023, from BPO Elks Lodge 994, Lindsey Stotz Secretary, located at 504 West 27th Street, for the NFAA located at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries.
Number five, under old business is consideration of memorandum 23-18 regarding the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for February 18th, 2023, from Hanton, Inc., Ben Hanton owner, doing business as Ben's Brewing Company at 222 West 3rd Street, for the NFAA located at 800 Archery Lane. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries.
Number six, under old business is a second reading of memorandum 23-19, ordinance 1068, restricting camping within the Yankton city limits. And before I ask, ask for the pleasure of the commission, I will ask city manager Leon to walk us through what's being asked tonight.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. A couple of things to talk about today in terms of the camping ordinance. So right now, the way we've treated camping in city limits is it's been associated with a special event, so if somebody wants to, we talked about the kayakers earlier, camp, for example, in Riverside Park, we have sent that through you for your approval. We actually don't have any ordinance indicating that it isn't prohibited, that it is allowed or isn't allowed, and so for you to approve it doesn't really have, doesn't mean a whole lot right now. So we need to formalize that portion of it. The ordinance itself, as it's written right now, gives myself or my designated authority to approve or not approve that, which you guys can change if you want. However, we think that makes most sense since we do so many things now administratively with special events type things, but it also does something else as well. It also prohibits camping, camping within the city, except for in areas that are designated campgrounds in zoning districts that allow campground, so we're not talking about KOA here, or if there should be another campground within city limits established, we're not talking about that. We're just talking about people in general camping, you know, in the park without permission or in some, on someone's property, private property, et cetera. Not trying to, you know, not trying to, if some kids want to camp out in their yard, you know, that's not what we're doing here. You know, that would be allowed, I suppose, technically, just like anything else, technically station call, city hall, that's not what we're looking at here. What we want to do is prevent people from camping on people's property that don't have permission, et cetera. Also, we've had an issue with camping along Marn Creek, people not understanding that as a flood hazard mitigation area and mistaking it as a camping area. That's not what it is. There's reasons not to camp there, for example. So this would put this in our ordinance and then allow our staff to give permission to people who, you know, maybe the kayakers who want to stay overnight in camp, or I think we've had folks associated with Rock and Mumble, et cetera, camp. So that's really what we're aiming to do here, and if you have any more questions, Ross or I are happy to answer them.
Thank you for that. Unless there's questions of the city manager of Ross, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
So have we seen an increase in this activity in recent years, or has it just been off and on?
Off and on. We have folks camping or wanting to camp. You know, I think we've seen more increase with special events type things, but we have had some folks that have camped, and we, you know, don't have the ability to tell them that that's not what the certain park or space is for, so we want to have that ability within our city limits.
I just have, the only concern I have, I understand where we're going with this, but the only concern I have is if there is a mom or dad that wants to pitch a tent in the backyard with the family, that technically they are guilty of misdemeanor if they haven't called, technically.
I mean, okay, however, you know, we want to be able to provide also, so...
and on?
Off and on. We have folks camping or wanting to camp. You know, I think we've seen more increase with special events type things, but we have had some folks that have camped. And we, you know, don't have the ability to tell them that that's not what, what the certain park or space is for. So we want to have that ability within our city limits.
I just have, the only concern I have, I understand where we're going with this, but the only concern I have is if, if there is a mom or dad that wants to pitch a tent in the backyard with, with the family, that technically they are guilty of this demeanor if they haven't called, technically.
Okay. However, you know, we want to be able to provide also. So, you know, if kids want to camp out in their backyard, great. However, if you have a large group of people camping in your backyard, or you have someone pull up an RV in your backyard and all of a sudden it becomes a disturbance in your neighborhood, we have a mechanism then for our police department to say, hey, you know, Villanuevas, you're getting kind of rowdy. You're getting rowdy and we need to shut it down. Go back into your house. But, I mean, I get that and we certainly don't want to discourage, you know, that. So, you know, technically, I suppose, yes. But technically, if people have, you know, a block party, we've had where they're supposed to get permission and what we end up doing is oftentimes the PD stops by and passes out some stickers and says, hey, next time, you know, FYI, just go ahead and let us know so we know about it. But I'm not thinking that will be, that, that won't be a problem or, or something that we need to enforce. But it could be if it becomes an issue.
Would this be similar to how we, if you have a lemonade stand, you're technically supposed to get a sales tax, like a lot of those things, but we don't enforce it, right? I mean, it's just a common sense type of thing.
Yes. How, and you know, lemon, yes. Yes. And we love the lemonade stands. So we don't want to, we, yeah. I mean, should they have a sales tax license and should they, you know, I suppose. But it can be reasonable. So, you know, your, if you feel that this is a good thing to prohibit, then, you know, we put in the ordinance that we could do that at a staff level. But if you want to be the decision makers there, time-wise, we just felt that it was maybe something that staff could handle.
Just one more thing to add, too. There, there's actually kind of a code-compliant zoning sort of issue with this as well. There, there have been over the years issues where people have sort of pulled up in town in an RV and parked and lived sort of nomadically throughout the town. And we also, this provides a tool to discourage that as well.
Other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is resolution 2303, recommending an adjustment for the salary of the city manager. Resolution 2303 regarding recommending an adjustment to the salary of the city attorney. We'll go in order. So the first one will be memorandum 2320 and resolution 2302 recommending an adjustment to the salary of the city manager. That recommendation in front of you tonight is 6% plus step, which is what we recommended for city employees. And that amount then would be $144,441.50. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. The next one is resolution 2303, recommending an adjustment for the salary of the finance officer. Recommended tonight in front of you is the 6% plus step, which puts that at $125,862.69. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, resolution passes. And the final one is resolution 2304, recommending an adjustment to the salary of the city attorney. That is a 7.2%, 7.26% raise, putting it at $71,358. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries on all three. Number two is consideration of memorandum 23-22, an introduction in first reading and setting February 13th, 2023, as a second reading and public hearing of ordinance 1069, supplement number one to ordinance 1064, the 2023 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced.
Number three under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-21 regarding resolution 2305, a conditional use permit for a school early childhood development center on a school tract one of Ridgeway North subdivision to the city of Yankton. That location is the south side of the 600 to 800 blocks of East 31st Street, the Yankton School District as applicant. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public?
I've got a quick question, if I could. Just curious, the drawings that we had seen in this, is there going to be some fencing at some point that maybe doesn't make it into this render that's in front of us here? I just know that there's a lot of fencing around most of the schools, so I would assume that there may be some. So that's a good question. There is a fair amount of discussion at the planning commission level about children's safety issues and also traffic controls potentially in the area. And, and the discussion landed on the point of the, you know, the school district is going to conduct business as appropriate based on the requirements. I know Sheila Woodward's here representing the school district and she can answer some of those questions too. So, you know, we have every confidence that the school district's going to meet whatever requirements they're subject to as far as maintaining safety for the, for the occupants of the building. One thing, if I may, I would suggest in the motion to specifically include, if you so wish, the waiver of the time limit for any future additions as shown in the drawing. That's something that's specific in our ordinance with a, with a one-year timeline on the initial permit. But at staff level and at the planning commission level, we discussed that if the school district has the significant of an investment in the site, if, if you do approve it, that the additions are also approved with a waiver of the time limit so that everybody in the neighborhood can know what to expect in the future as far as possible expansions.
Dave, is that something we need to amend the motion, or is that?
That's, that's a good question for the city attorney, possibly. That, that was the recommendation from staff and the planning commission. So if the motion, as stated, just by default includes that, then no, you wouldn't. But we definitely need, need to make sure that that's in the record somehow for future commissions and, and public decades from now, maybe to know.
Dave, can you remind me, when is this scheduled to open? Is it like the 24, 25 school year, or?
We had a little bit of that discussion at the planning commission level, too, but I'll leave that up to the school district representative.
If you could step to the podium and state your name, please.
Sheila Woodward. I'm the school district's attorney, one of them, anyway. Hopefully, it opens in August of 2024. If you could get rid of some of this snow, it might make it easier. The plan is to start construction, hopefully yet this spring.
Thank you.
And Tony, as to your question on fencing, I don't know that I can specifically tell you what kind of fencing is going there, but it's, it's top priority to make sure the kids are safe at that location. So part of it is BY Water also has an easement around the outside of that, along 31st Street, and they're coming with water pipes into that area. And they're going to come almost right after the school district builds. And so we've got to kind of coordinate some of those things with them, too. It might have to be temporary initially.
Dave, according to our city attorney, it does sound like we'll need to make an amendment to the motion. Al, do you have the wording that will need to be in that amendment, or do you need Dave to restate what needs to be in that amendment? And then I'll need a commissioner or two to...
I would say the wording should be something like, "The permit approval includes a time extension for future additions to the facility." I'll go ahead and read that right from the item. So amend the original motion in accordance with staff's recommendations to not only approve the request, but to include the waiver of the time limit for construction of the future additions. And I'd ask for a second.
Second. Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions before we vote on the amendment? Just want to make sure there's nothing in front of anybody else before we do that. All right. So with that, we will vote on the amendment first. Roll call.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, amendment passes. With that, then we will go back to the original motion of the conditional use permit for the Yankton School District as applicant. Any commission discussion or further discussion on that?
As amended.
As amended. Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number four under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-23 regarding a 2023 sidewalk cafe permit application at 100 East 3rd Street, doing business as Boomer's Lounge. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson.
Aye.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum 23-24 regarding the contract for professional services with Banner Associates, Inc., for the Marn Creek sanitary sewer crossing replacement in the amount of $69,400, of which $52,900 is for design and bidding services, and $16,500 for construction administration. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
My bomb.
Aye.
Minor.
Aye.
Schramm.
Aye.
Villanueva.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Mayor Moser.
Aye, motion carries. There is no other business in front of this? No?
There is not, Mayor. I just wanted to mention to the commission and the public that we'll look into how to appropriately address the flag and replace or do what we need to do there to treat that with respect. And also, on behalf of Alan Ross and I, thank you for your generosity on the salary adjustments.
Thank you for that. Seeing no other business in front of the city commission tonight, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting of January 23rd, 2023.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, folks.